Notice is legally posted according to the Open Meetings Act and that there is a forum. All council members are present. Do we have anyone who wanted to address the council?
We do, we have one, Ms. Lorna Kaloy.
Okay. Ms. Kaloy?
Just a quick question because I know it's a line item here on your agenda, but I can't ask questions during that time, so I'm gonna ask them now and hope they'll be answered when you get to that line item. I didn't know on the mitigation rates if it's gonna be for all calls or if it's gonna be residents versus non-residents. Also, does it affect mutual aid calls? I'd like to know who our medical director is. And I'm assuming that all of your EMS personnel are licensed and firefighters, I'm assuming, are certified and trained. TML's still your insurance carrier for the fire department? And who's gonna be doing the billing for the mitigation rates? You know, is it gonna be in the department or something that's provided by the city? Do the funds go to the city or to the fire department? I'm not real clear on that. And just in the interest of full disclosure, is anybody that's on the fire department or a family member or with the city benefiting from the mitigation rates? So, when you get to that line item, if we could get those answered, that would be good.
Okay, those are all good questions. We'll try to get them answered. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
That's it.
Okay. Alright, we'll go to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion if you adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? Now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda's adopted. We'll go to departmental reports. Parks and streets, water sanitation, Swish?
What I have is mowing season has started, so we already started mowing and weeding. And we have cut down a lot of trees. We've cut down about ten, twelve trees this month. We've been working a lot of contractors, been tapping water lines and sewer lines in. Just staying busy and our generator has also, this is a picture of where our generator was on the pit. So they already made the pad down. And the good thing about this generator thing, they said that our panel, the panel will be like up to date. So that's a plus for us. So the panel will be up to date, but it don't, it won't look up to date, but it will be up to date. So it's a good thing.
Okay, well, I know we did have a disruption of service. It was a lightning strike, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So that's the generator that, the backup generator is what we're trying to get so that if that ever does happen again, we'll have it. But it's just been on back order because the, as I understand it, the state required everybody to get one and so the supply can't keep up with the demand. So that's why they're...
Yeah, it would've been nice, he said it would've been nice if we could've got that gas, you know, a natural gas one. Because we do have a gas line out there, but he said this ain't gonna work. So...
I wanted to ask Swish a couple of questions about that casing on that one well pump.
Oh, the casing on the well pump? That's something that we have, I guess, with the budget for or something. Because by the casing, then on that well pump, we still have like a little bit of casing going in and now they're stopping the meter. So I would assume that that casing is probably going a little bit before it's going inside the ground. So it's a little...
And then also the two pump meters or motors? Wouldn't we need three of them instead of two?
Well, right...
Because they get so hot.
As of right now, we have those two, which is, they, both of them is working hard, which we do need them to like, you know, alternate one at a time. Right now, by both of them going at the same time, they get real hot. But like, just in case, like if something was to happen and one of those meters go out, then you only have, I mean, one of those pumps go out and you only have that one pump working. By being so hot with them two, you probably would need that third pump to help out because, I mean, burn that pump up, we think we didn't have no electricity. We probably wouldn't have no water for days.
Have we priced that yet?
No.
No, sir? No, do that.
Yeah, that should be a priority.
Yeah.
Well, if it's not priced and then voted on and passed it, then it don't mean enough money in the budget. Because it seem like to me that'll be just, we saying something, but we don't hold our word on primopage. Vote it on and pass it.
Still gonna have it, I don't guess.
Thank you, Swish. Alright. Building inspection, code enforcement, Fred, you have anything for us?
Hello?
Quite a few. A lot of few months of inspections. Getting the compliance you want?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to fire department then.
A little busy. Had five medical calls, one accident call, four fire calls, two mutual aid, or total of twelve callouts for the month of January. On, I want to give a shout out and recognize Jalen Davis. He worked on getting some grants for the fire department and that allows us, with the grants that he got, some educational material that we can use. And the educational material in association with the State Firefighters Fire Marshal Association. We can take that training here in town. We take a test, then every firefighter can be certified through the State Firefighters Fire Marshal Association as a certified firefighter. So, it's great. So Jalen got that ball rolling on the grant.
Thank you, Jalen.
It's a, not a match grant. We're paying for it and they'll be able to check back.
So the training can be done here?
Yes, the training is gonna be done here at the fire station. And then everybody on the department will eventually be certified firefighters through the State Firefighters Fire Marshal Association. Right now, we have three members that are certified firefighters and three or four EMTs.
Licensed?
Yes, licensed EMTs. And I'm working on re-getting mine back too, so that'll be five as certified EMTs.
We, we've had a couple people that's been certified, but they just lost it. So, with Jackson, he's been certified, and a couple other people have been certified. But everybody, most of, most of departments has been through medical training at one point.
We're all certified as medical provider CPR certification. We're all with that. And we have one or two that's actually in the EMT school right now. So, we're moving forward with everything.
Okay, thank you. Municipal court?
Court has been a little bit busy. It's more, I think I told you all last time, it's warrant roundup month. So everybody's starting to get their little postcards that they have worn out and, you know, like it. So lots of phone calls lately. We have a hundred and three tickets brought in for the month of January. We closed out a hundred and thirty-four. Average speed over posted speed limit is nineteen point six nine rolls per hour. We will have actually trials next month and then go back to pre-trials after that.
Those are trial document compared to say this time last year?
The trials are pre-trials.
Well, trials.
Trials say about, about the same. We have, we don't have them as often because we just don't have that many. So we usually wait till we have kind of a buildup and then we will set like six or seven at a time, sometimes eight. So half of them won't show up. And they're, they're a lot lengthier process than just a pre-trial. We can set twenty to twenty-five pre-trials and be out of here by seven, instead of thirty. We've set up trials one time until eight or eight-thirty at night just because they take a lot longer. So it's about the same, but we only set like six to seven, eight at a time.
Most of the pre-trials result, they go ahead and make something, the arrangement?
Most of the time. And then he'll give them an offer at court and we'll set trial. And then they'll call like, can we just have that offer that prosecutor made? Because they don't want to come. So that's usually what happens.
Pre-trials usually when lawyers get serious about a case. My experience, so I just wondered how it's going. In this post-COVID era, it looks like it's about the same.
Yeah, still going about the same.
Chief Amos is not here today to give a police report. We do have some stuff in our manual as usual we can look through. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Well, we just got to you, but if you need a little time to get ready...
I've had plenty of time in traffic to think about it.
Okay. Number five is discuss results from smoke testing done by Freeman Milliken Inc. And Mr. Carlos Aguilar here to give us a summary of that.
Which, sorry for the paper copies, it was kind of a rush deal that I had to print out. Alright, so as a part of the ARP money that you guys are spending, we're doing smoke testing of the city's sewer system and trying to determine why you guys are getting so much additional flow at your wastewater plant that's causing your numbers to go up. And the smoke testing would identify all of the, all of the failures within the system, whether on private or on public side of the, of the system. So this report, what it contains is, is a map of the entire city system. We did some smoke testing and which identified a bunch of areas which we have pictures and addresses of, of where those, of where those items, where we found those, the failures. Unfortunately, I just want to go ahead and say this right now. The paper copies I guys gave you don't have these eleven by seventeens. They have like, they cut it off. But basically, this is a rehabilitation summary of all of the items that were located. So there were seventy items located, areas located of deficiency. Everything ranging from just the ceiling, the ceilings around manholes that need to be resealed that are, you know, been old and cracked and water's just going in them when it rains or we get high water. Existing lines at empty property lots that just have a pipe that's exposed and it's just waters, it's like acting like a drain, so it all goes into the wastewater plant. Cleanout caps that are busted off, you know, private property or that are, that are, they're acting like drains and water's going to them. We found a couple of broken city mains or cracked city mains. And so the difference between inflow and infiltration, which is what INI is, is inflow is whenever you have, say like a crack in the pipe or like the manhole cover maybe is not there and there's a lot of water at one time. So if it rained yesterday, you would see the impact of that this morning. Whereas infiltration is, there's like small cracks or it's leaks that are getting in, right? So if it rained yesterday, you might see that impact on Friday or Saturday. It takes that long to get into the system and impact it. So to be able to better identify those things and better prioritize those things, we've gone here through our, in our report, we've prioritized all of these items. And said, these are the items that have a moderate impact, an extreme impact, a light impact. And that way the city could then take this list of things and address them appropriately. We also put a cost of what we felt like it would cost to fix these things. And so, I mean, going into this, just so you guys know, with the amount of inflow and infiltration the city was getting, we were expecting huge numbers. Like, it's gonna be hard to fix all this stuff. But surprisingly, and I guess it was good news, we have a total cost for the city to fix all the things that are the city's issue was thirty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. And that's nothing relative. I mean, I know money's money, but when you're thinking it's gonna cost me ten times that amount of money to address everything, and it ends up costing you that, that's something that you can, you can fix in a couple of years if you wanted to or in one year if you wanted to. Now, on the private side, which are lines, so this is the way it works. Anything on, on private property that is, that's deficient, like a cracked service line or something like that, is the responsibility of a property owner. That's the way it is in every city. That's just the way, the cities are not responsible for the private plumbing on somebody's property. And so what we found on there were, was about fifteen thousand dollars rounded up from fourteen nine eighty. Fifteen, I missed it while I went, I'll fix it. Fifteen thousand dollars on the private side. That's all together of all the lots within Milford or businesses and commercial or whatever, where we found deficiencies. It's a total cost of about fifteen, yeah, fifteen thousand dollars. I misspoke. The municipal cost on this was twenty-four thousand eight seventy. So combined, combined is thirty-nine thousand eight fifty. But it, it just identified all the areas that we have. Now, we're currently also working on the wastewater plant and doing, are gonna do some expansion on the wastewater plant. Right now, I guess we're gonna, we, once these things are addressed, you will see a benefit. You will see a benefit in the amount of flow that's coming to the plant. It'll reduce it just because you just won't have all that water that's initially hitting it and heading down your, and you're treating water that's not sewage water at that point. You're treating rainwater. And that, that's not, that's supposed to just naturally go into a creek, right? And then go down and do its thing. So those are our findings for citywide of what we had. Now, I, the city will have two, we have one copy that we keep on our records for like this, that's hard copy, that we keep on ours and we keep this for up to ten years in our offices. We provided the city with two of these as well. And within them, they have, they have a digital copy of that. They can quickly get to things and they can, you can scan this, I guess, if they needed to for other stuff. But, but that was it. It was surprisingly not as bad as we were thinking it was gonna be. I mean, we've worked in cities before where they found multiple manholes that are sitting in a creek that kids have knocked off the manhole lids and nobody knew about. And, and then they were just taking on water at their wastewater plant. They're expanding their wastewater plant to handle all this water because they don't know where it's coming from. And so, so overall, it looks like it's, it's the impact, that the, the impact is not as bad in terms of financially as we, as we were thinking it was going to be. Still a lot of money, but not what we thought it would be based on the amount of flow you're getting at the wastewater plant. Yes, sir?
When you say thirty-nine thousand dollars, is that for just the materials or is that for somebody that you've actually, to contract to be able to actually do?
Well, so, so what it is, is a lot of these things that are on here, with the exception maybe, maybe of the, of the main that has a crack in it, you guys can, I mean, it's just concrete you're gonna put around them.
Okay, so we're just grounding the manholes?
Yeah, you're just grounding those things or fixing, or fixing. And we have recommendations in here for like the type of cleanout covers that should be used that are hard for people to pull off. And, because that's what happens, I mean, it happens everywhere. Just people pull their cleanouts off and the yard isn't flooded anymore because the water goes down in the cleanout, just it's up at the plant. But, so we, so we've priced all that stuff out. And so you can see like, those things are eight or fifteen dollars or something like that per cap. So it's stuff that your own public works can do. And it isn't anything that has to be done like, well, we got the reports, everything needs to be done by next week. It's, hey, let's order up some of these caps. We have the addresses of everywhere where it's at, so let's go fix it. And the city will have to make a decision. It's a, it's not a hard one typically in most cities. In most cities, they make it very easily and it's in their ordinances. That private side is a private side. And so you can send letters out to those, to those residents and say, hey, we'll give you sixty days to go out and buy the cleanout cap and put it on there or do whatever you need to do to, to address that. Once you started fixing things on the private side, you've set a precedent. And now anybody can come in here and say, well, in 2024, you fixed that guy's steel. Now you gotta fix mine. And they have a legal standing, and that's why cities don't do that. And so, so we can inform them by letter. Again, you have an address, a location, you have a picture of the actual issue that they're, that they had at their house. So, yeah, I mean, overall, of all the smoke testing things we've seen, this one would rank at the bottom of how bad it can be. I mean, we've seen some that are horrible. But, but so you guys just have some areas where you're getting a lot of water in, but they're just smaller areas that can be fixed fairly cheaply.
So it means we're not flowing a lot of water into our steel?
No, you, you, you're not, you're not flushing a lot of water into your system. You are flowing a lot of...
From like that.
It's not gonna take a lot of money to fix it.
Yeah, but it won't take a lot of money to fix those things. So, and I think the benefit to these proportions, sometimes when you get, when you guys get like an, like a proposal to do these things, it's always like, oh my God, how, that's a lot of money to do a report. We got guys on the ground everywhere here and they're tracking the smoke, they're flagging the smoke, they're taking the picture, they're reporting it. I mean, every one of these things has like a, every incident area has a, has a report, a picture, tells you where it's at, if it's moderate or if it's, you know, light. If it's, I mean, there's a lot of reporting that goes into it, but it makes it easy on the repairs too because you can pinpoint it. You can go right to the spot, you know exactly where it's at. So I'm hoping that this is extremely helpful. And it'll help, it'll help everything. It'll help businesses that want to come to Milford because your plant can handle more. You know, it'll help development because your plant will be able to handle more. It'll, it'll help those types of things. So hopefully everybody will get the benefit of, the city will see the true benefit of this as we move forward.
Well, we appreciate it. It doesn't sound like there's a lot near as much digging as we call it. That's where your expense...
When you have time to look through this and you look at the pictures, you're gonna say like, how did we leave that like that? How did nobody see that? Because one of them, there's like a pipe just coming out of the ground. Is that it? Yes. And water's just flowing into it like it's a culvert and it's going right into your plant.
Imagine that.
Yeah. So, so, so that's what, that's where this is helpful for people who aren't familiar with the system as a whole. Does anybody have any other questions that you guys might want to ask about?
Oh, I know what.
If we needed to bid anything, would that be something y'all would...
Yeah, yeah, if you guys want to bid the workout, then, so because of the price of the work, the way the procurement, Texas procurement laws are municipal through municipal law, is it, you, we would only have to, if we're just doing the city work, okay? If we're just doing the city work, then we could literally request specific bids from people. You don't have to go privately out like into a public bid because of the price is so low. If you got it above twenty-five thousand dollars, you have to send out three requests to three specific vendors. If it gets to fifty thousand dollars, then you gotta put it in the paper and you gotta advertise and people gotta submit closed bids. Right now, we believe that the city's issues are under twenty-five. So if there's like, I don't know, because I'm not familiar with the businesses out this way. If there's local guys that say, hey, we do this kind of work, then we can just present them with the stuff that needs to be done and they can give us a quote to do it and we can, we can go get it done.
So this is something that's...
Oh, yeah, 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 you can, yeah, you can use that. But I'm gonna tell you guys right now, since we're talking about that and I know it's not the topic, your wastewater plant improvements are gonna use every dime you've got. I mean, every dime. We've just received bids in from, and you wouldn't believe in three months, a jump. A jump in steel, in equipment, in, there is a huge jump. So people who say inflation is going away, I don't know where it's going away because, because man, I still see it. But what, 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 and I'm sure that the businesses or, I know that you guys are looking at, there's a big one, a big business on the end, yeah. And anybody else, any development that's want to come in, they're not gonna want to, they're not gonna want you to not build your plant out big enough to handle them to go and fix things that you literally could fix every now and again. Like, let's get the plant fixed because that's what's gonna help you guys as a whole. And so that, that plant is gonna take up every bit of that ARP money, every single bit of it. And also, we allocated that money, when we went, when I went to the county and did that, got that one point one million dollars, we, we allocated that money to the plant, so hopefully, hopefully it works. Hopefully we get it all done in there. We've just been getting some bids back that are crazy on other plants, so. Any other questions for you guys? Everybody good?
Thank you for your presentation. That was very informative.
Yeah. And if anybody has any questions on this, if you want to give them to Kim and she can compile them or if you guys have, I think you guys have my, you guys all have, have a way to contact me. Just shoot me an email if you have any questions about it. But it's pretty straightforward. I mean, here's an issue, here's what the issue is, this is the impact it has. And, but if you do have any questions, please feel free to give me a shout and do it. Good?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. That was fun. Head right back into it. See you guys, thank y'all so much.
Do you have a way, Kim, to be able to email or to be able to send out with the water bill the issues to these actual properties, to each person, individual person?
We could just mail them letters. We can't really put it on the, I mean, I guess we could, but I'd like to put the picture on there so you can see.
Yeah, it needs to be, it needs to be direct.
I think that would be...
I think we need to get that done as soon as possible, especially with it coming up on rain season. We're gonna be flooding that thing. Especially if this one stays open. And the caps are fairly easy pigs.
Yeah. And it's not an expensive pigs.
I haven't looked at this real thoroughly, but it seems like as far as materials are concerned, the manhole covers is probably the most expensive. We may need to, we'll talk about this later, but we may need to bid that out and just have a company come in here and do a little balling at one time and get that behind us. Because that's probably, it's the biggest hole, so I'm assuming that's where most of the water's going in. I don't know if that's true, but...
And what about the cracks in the mains?
Some of that, I, I don't know. I guess it's gonna have to be dug up and just replace the PVC pipe. I don't know any other way to do that, but that's not mine.
I just want to know why this pipe here running from this running down, running some down off in this creek.
You can't tell me nobody's seen that.
This pipe running here was running out of that pipe down off into that creek.
That might be one of the first ones we looked at. They've got on there moderate.
It's fixed though. I say it's, it's still like that with its fixed.
Cap?
Yeah, there's cap.
Any of them that's, that's ours, we should be, the first thing we do.
There's a few of them that I noticed, it just, it just said it needs a cap. I mean, apparently, like there was a residence there and now there's not a home there and, I don't know, some kind of the pipe either deteriorated or... Swish, did you get a location where each one is on?
I haven't even seen it yet.
I mean, he got the address, so it's worth looking.
It's an address, it's okay.
No, I know, but does Swish have it so that Swish can?
Well, Swish will, he'll get it.
This is fairly new materials. We haven't had time to really...
It's got it like running out right now.
...evaluated at all.
Yeah, because for some reason, I don't know if it's our emails or what, but even the mayor's tried to email it, we cannot get it on our city emails. It will not compare.
It's too big for them to make an attachment out of it. You just, it just won't, it won't go through. You have to use Dropbox or some of the things like that.
Can you do a few pages at a time?
They got it now?
Yeah. I'm old fashioned, I have to have it in printed form and lean back when I read. I can't, I can't squint and look at the screen. Not in, not in a hundred and forty pages anyway. But it has lots of photos as you'll see and it's, it's pretty specific.
Well, there's one house here that it's just nothing, the pipe doesn't have a cover. That's across main. A lot of them are, I hear in town.
A little of everything.
So we gave him the okay, right, that we put it out for him?
Well, Kyler? Not yet.
Oh.
But we can. We, I think we need to decide what we want to bid out and how much of it we can do with, with our staff, personnel. And look at prices on the materials we need, how many. And we, we can scout around on that, see what it's gonna cost and see if there's any advantages to bidding it out.
Yeah. As I say, if I could get with one of the, somebody with, with license and get their, get a back truck in or something like that, only thing they need to do as long as they there and long as they expect it, like me and Kim can get it done, so.
Yeah, and I don't think we're buying any material... Yeah, and I don't think we're buying any materials in enough volume to really save anything by letting somebody else do it, I mean, if you only need like twenty or thirty caps, you might be able to get those at on diesel or loads or something, as 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 opposed to try to make a bigger production out of it, it uh it probably wouldn't hurt if we had a few of those stocked in our shed, you know?
Just by going on other people's prop, you know?
Yeah, yeah, we gotta figure out how to do that, so, I wanna see if I can check with our attorneys on that, and make sure we're not making a boo-boo there, because it is, you do make an argument, if you do it for one, everybody wants it done, and uh, I'm not even, I'm not gonna say it's not legal, but my legal mind tells me it may not be if we go on private property and do something, because uh.
Well, I think with the caps, if we, if it's okay, if we, if the city just bought them, and had them at City Hall, and send them a letter and say, hey, we got caps at the City Hall, anybody that wants one can come get one and put it in your hole.
That might work.
I mean, to keep water from running in our pumps.
Cause it, cause we, yeah, it helps us more than it helps them, and if unless they got some kind of aroma and a cesspool in their yard, they're gonna think, well, it's not really benefiting me, why I always spend six hundred yard dollars for that, uh, but if it's just a cap, that's a whole, whole different thing, but uh, we'll we'll figure out how to do it, and try to get it, get it done as efficiently as we can. But I'm all for making it easier for people, if we can do it. We're gonna move to number six now, discuss some possible action to grant a marriage to LaNell Johnson, one oh four Dyphit, they have a second storage building on her property. Ms. Johnson? Yes, you wanna tell us what you're requesting?
A ten by twenty shed.
And you have one already?
Yeah, it's this one already on there.
Is it the same size, or?
It's a little bigger than the one that's there.
Y'all think?
You should came and asked for a very.
She has the paperwork that was turned in with the pictures and all of that, if y'all wanna see it.
It all looked legit.
Is there room for it, all the property lines and everything?
Well, one spot she's got drawn here, it's not really on her property, according to the way the survey sheet showed the property.
So where are you trying to put it in?
Um, mine is on the blue one. The one that I moved, the spot that you said I couldn't use, across from there, right?
That lot?
Across from it.
It's on, it's on the other lot, that's where that one's drawn, so it's not on yours.
The one I sho, when you came out?
That one that?
And I showed you the one by the dog peeing, that's where I'm gonna put it.
Okay.
So it is like your problem?
That part is, that one is, yeah. It's just she's already got one shed there.
So you just don't sit it by the, sit it on the side of the?
Well, it fits, the other one fits, but.
This is the backyard, Ms. Johnson?
This is the backyard.
Is it a rules room to have one shed per property? Is it uh can it be put in there and and have the prop, the offsets from the property, what is it, seven feet, or two feet, or what? Seven, we're still at seven? So they can fit in there? It'll fit, it's just there's that rule that we're on, we have to have one on the property, and there's already one on the property. Does it uh block anybody's view of anything that?
No, it's in the back, it's in the back.
In the very back. What's behind you there, okay?
Old family lot, old family house. It was actually one big lot, and so we split it in half, so I can get a mobile home put on there. And so the people that lived there first, they already had a shed, but I'm coming from Dallas, and I need my own shed, so I need to put another one on there. So nobody has a problem with it.
Well, I was just, yeah, I was just wondering how it might affect neighbors.
Oh, they are my neighbors. All of them family.
Okay, I don't wanna, I don't wanna grant this, have somebody come down tomorrow and put us some.
Oh, no, no.
Block their view of the sunset or something.
It's nothing like that.
Okay, okay, well, what?
Well, I don't, if she's asking for a variance, I make a motion that we grant her the variance.
Her seventy.
Any further questions or discussions?
I'm just worried about down the road.
What's being down the road?
Well, uh, what I mean by is, uh, we're only supposed to have one per lot, or per residence, and if we give it.
That's why she here.
That's why she's asking.
That's why it's a bad, basically, for a variance.
You have to look at each one of them.
Most people didn't put things on their line, don't even ask for variance till it's too late, they move trailer houses over there in the trailer park, and at night, and don't come and ask for permission.
Yeah, she probably don't even get in spite of their point there.
Look up, they are metrics, then run down the park.
How tall is it?
A normal side building, gum. I'm sure it's not a, it's not a problem, yeah.
Well, we proceed to vote, all those in favor, if you'll say aye, any opposed? Got one no, and four yeses, so, variance is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll say, discuss some possible actions, set spring cleaning date.
Number seven, oh, you missed number seven.
Well, that is seven.
Oh, you almost got that.
This is the end, we took one off of there, because there's notices that need to go out.
Um, on um, on number six, I really think we need to sit down once again and and look at these ordinances, because if we're not gonna do what they say that we need to get rid of them, I mean, we need to do away with them, because it's, and we have a lot of ordinances that we don't even, people just, like junk cars, it's supposed to be licensed and registered, and it can't be in your yard, and they're all over town, so I'm I'm just saying if you know, I mean, if if you, if you want two storage buildings, and if you want people to have two, as long as they are on their property, then they should be able to have two. If, but we gotta, it shouldn't, I don't feel that for something like that, that if we're just gonna allow it, then we, it shouldn't come to the council, it shouldn't even have to even be questioned. I mean, if that's what we're gonna do.
As long as it's infected and.
As long as it's on your property, I mean.
And fits the boundary line.
The boundaries line, yeah, it should really.
Are we permitting that?
The sheds?
Yeah, so they do that to come to the city for permit, right? Yeah.
In the past, I've kinda used to let Mark just kinda decide, we've had this conversation before, I think with one of your crossfire, I'll kinda give Mark the decision of that, you know? He felt like that the mobile, the storage buildings were in the property lines, within the setbacks, and weren't gonna cause any problems, we would, they could have up to two, but because it's new here, we don't, we just decided to bring it up for council to just get it on paper, and, you know, I had a decision that we were making.
Okay. Well, we'll move to number seven, and take up the spring cleaning day, does anybody have any suggestions?
We've done it on the vote day in the past, I don't know if that's.
I think we changed it, did we change it last year?
We've been changing it every year, that's, we used to always do it on election day, but I think it's just kinda gone back and forth, whether, you know, we need people to vote and not be waiting in line for hours for that, and so we've changed it, we've had it in June, we had it in April, we've just whenever.
With last year, we had it during uh, with spring break, then the school had birthday.
I don't remember.
I think so.
Oh, it was Earth Day.
Uh, Earth Day.
Earth Day.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't wanna do it on spring break, there'd be too many people out, maybe out of town.
If we could do two dates, because I have to verify with D C I, so that's kinda what we did last year, kind of take two dates, uh, that's why it's on here so early, because they hook up really fast on their dumpsters.
Hey, when is spring break?
We can do it.
It's in March.
It's Saturday, the other day.
Yeah.
Fifteen, so.
Somewhere around that, no, March, I don't know exactly.
It's the tenth through the seventeenth, I'll tell you, yeah, March, because that's when my.
That's next month, so we're gonna be able to get it.
April is probably.
April the twenty-seventh or the twentieth?
I know April eighth is not a good day, but that's a fun day. That's the equator, so, yeah, we might be all out there, we're gonna be outside.
Birthday's on Monday, twenty-second, so.
It's only twenty-seventh.
Would we wanna get it two weeks, two Saturdays in a row, or would we wanna have a gap? Any advantage to that one way or the other?
Yeah, probably the most important thing, make sure that Swish and Ken are available.
Yeah, exactly.
The nineteenth and the twentieth of April is uh, or area or regionals track meet, which they'll have kids participating, so we'll hold it to that.
No, so the twenty-seventh?
I don't know if there's any, have you seen anything on there for the twenty-seventh?
No, no. Of April?
Of April.
April. Do we need to go ahead and set another one at this time?
Next, the next Saturday?
April, twenty-seventh, April twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
You should say the next Saturday, I think that would be.
For another.
Oh, oh, the next.
Well, the next Saturday is election day.
Yeah, we don't feel.
So we could go two Saturdays after that, May eleventh.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I mean.
No, I'm just getting them to do two, two dates, in case D C I doesn't have one available.
Yeah, maybe eleven, the eleventh or the twenty-seventh.
May eleventh as backup.
But we're only gonna do it once, right?
Yes, just once, I just, so we don't have to put it back on here again.
Depends on the availability of dumpsters, are we getting three this time?
We usually do three, they filled up pretty good last year.
I think we've gone through the last few years.
I think we get two in our contract, and the city pays for one, is usually how it goes.
And their contract done, say?
Their contract's up in September, October, November, October.
You have the backup votes?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we set the spring cleanup date April the twenty-seventh, or maybe eleventh of twenty twenty-four, I second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, say aye, opposed, okay. Motion carries, we'll check with D C I, and see whether April twenty-seventh or May the eleventh is, uh, they have two dumpsters available, or three dumpsters available, and the city pays for one. And the other two are paid for through our contract with D C I. We'll move to number eight, discuss some possible action to approve ordinance number three seven nine two four, adopting uh, the following codes, twenty twenty-one international building code, twenty twenty-one international residential code, twenty twenty-one international existing building code, twenty twenty-one international fire code, twenty twenty-one international mechanical code, twenty twenty-one international plumbing code, twenty twenty-one international fuel gas code, twenty twenty-one international property maintenance code, twenty twenty-one international energy conservation code, and twenty twenty-one international swimming pool and spa code, twenty twenty national electric code.
What codes do we have now?
Twenty eighteen, yeah, but our fire, so kinda what brought this up was our fire code, we updated the last building codes to the twenty eighteen, the fire code wasn't included in it, so we were still on the twenty thirteen or twenty fifteen fire code, it was pretty, pretty due to be updated. Um, and it kinda came to our attention, uh, when an inspection was being done, and I couldn't find where that one was updated, so that, we just kinda decided to do all of them at the same time, get them all brought up, so that that fire code was more recent.
So the twenty-ones and the twenties in here, ain't it more up to date in twenty-three or twenty-two?
Yes, but they, any inspector is really not gonna recommend that you go with the newest code, because there's so many keys being worked out in them, that they just say, go with the year before, let all the keys get worked out, and then go, because there's a lot of problems.
Usually they come in two or three years.
Oh, right.
It's not every year, I know electrical colors every three years, but I don't know about the other ones, because they're all three, okay.
I make a question of the past, I have to read the whole thing again?
Just read the ordinance number?
I make a motion that we pass ordinance number three seven nine dash two four, adopting our new building codes. Uh, before we get to second, is the, the national electric code is, you've got it on here twenty twenty, is that? Is that correct? It's not a misprint, okay, just wanna make sure, okay, we have a second?
I see.
Okay, any further discussion?
As far as these codes, not just these codes, but like Kai was talking about, in our book of codes in uh Milford, I know of some companies that will change or make them up to date, all these codes, as long as they go above and beyond.
Yeah, it's fine.
But it's something like a, it's a computer outfit, there's a couple of them that other cities are using, where they keep up on the code, where we don't always have to go through all of this.
You talking about the printing of them, or?
Printing and legal deal, and all that stuff. It's something we can look into, I mean, get somebody to come in and talk about it, or on the phone, or, there's a couple of them that use, different city uses them, I see, they give a list of the cities and textures they use them, where uh.
This is all our codes, or just these particular codes?
No, no, our codes, Milford city codes, stuff, codes like that, yeah, where they'll keep updating them every year, you know?
That's a kind of a bigger.
Something that causes a lot of.
Issue than than just the building codes?
Yeah, it's, it's not the building code, but it's the, all our other codes in the city. Where they'll, they'll be up to snuff legally and all that good stuff. We can look at if we're in our ordinances.
About our ordinances?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, kind of update, revise ordinances. Okay, well, we'll proceed to vote on proposed ordinance three seventy-nine dash two four, all those in favor, say aye, any opposed? Ordinance three seven nine dash two four is adopted. Uh, discuss some possible action to pass ordinance number three seven seven dash two four, ordering an election for one mayor and three council positions on the first Saturday of May, being sixth of May twenty twenty-four.
Fourth.
It's May fourth.
Fourth.
No, I put the wrong date.
Yeah.
So we can't go on, sorry.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance number three seven seven two four, ordering election for one mayor and three council members on the fair Saturday of May, the fourth day of twenty twenty-four.
All those in favor, say aye, any opposed? Ordinance three seven seven dash two four is is approved, discuss some possible action to approve ordinance number three seven eight dash two four, establishing and implementing a program to charge mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the fire department for services provided or rendered by a Ford City Milford Fire Department. She thinks she wanna explain that to us?
Okay, this is something that had went on for years, it's through a company named Fire Recovery, they're in California.
Okay, this is something that had went on for years, it's through a company named Fire Recovery, they're in California.
First of all, so you're not, you're charging, you're not talking about citizens, charging, okay.
Outside of the.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure that.
There, there, I'll, I'll explain, there, there's one little thing to that. Uh, but the, the fire department had done it for years, for some reasons, they stopped submitting runs. So the fire department got kicked out of the program. The program has now said, okay, now to do it, we have to pass an ordinance, that's why I've come forward now for an ordinance to be passed. The mitigate mitigation rates would only affect, no citizen, no resident of Milford. Will be billed for any service. The only thing that any, for the fire department or fire recovery would attempt to collect. From a citizen or resident of Milford is if they have structured fire and they have insurance that will cover it. We will collect from the insurance company only. We will not bill the residents, the citizens will not have to pay a dime. Now, an accident on the highway, and these are only, you'd only be billed for fires. And accidents, medical runs, we don't do medical runs, medical runs, we are first responders only. We are there just to basically hold your hand, comfort you until the ambulance gets there. That's all we're there, I mean. Everybody that runs doesn't even, aren't certified to do anything, so we are there basically just to comfort you. So we don't need a medical director, because the ambulance service provides the paramedics. And everything that administers all the medications where they would need a medical director. That answer that question?
Sort of. So we used to do this in the fire department when I was in it, and that's part of how we operate.
Right, and then that's why the money always went to the fire department.
Yeah, correct.
The money never went to the city, it always goes straight to the fire department, the fire department uses, uses it for equipment at the fire. That's why basically right now, only one fire truck is owned by, or partially owned by the city. All that other equipment was purchased by the fire department from funds that they've gotten. And grants and stuff like that.
City covers the insurance.
City does cover the insurance on all the apparatuses and stuff like that.
They did that before we ever had a building system.
Then you have to own it too. You don't insure something that you don't own, do you?
I think in a business like that.
You can.
Yeah.
So you don't provide oxygen or anything?
Not right now, no.
Okay.
We are just there, now if he runs. We have a F R O that we would fall under with allegiance. That would fall, that would uh.
That's your medical director.
Yes, that would be the medical director, if he's there, he administers, but I don't even think we have any full oxygen bottles right now. Because we've just dropped everything down, waiting to see what was going on between. Ambulance services. Cause you had East Texas, or no, we had Amarton and now we have allegiance, so.
Well, and you would work under the ambulance service, you were contacted, wouldn't you, if you did it, administered anything?
Right, if you're, if you're E M P or a paramedic, yeah, or E C A.
Yeah, so that's.
You, you would walk under that.
Yeah.
But back to this. The. The only way anybody will be charged is for accidents, motor vehicle accidents and fires. That, we will not charge for no medical regardless, because we don't really provide medical, so we won't. Now, the, an accident on the highway or an accident here in town. We have the option to bill the insurance, if the insurance refuses to pay, which a lot of them will. Then we can go after the individual personally to pay the responsible party for the accident. So that fire recovery basically, they get the cr- uh, crash report and say, okay, the officers put this down, this down for this person. This is the person that we're gonna go after for paying the city back for. The use of the equipment. And we can do it, we can do, send it off to a bill collector if they don't pay, or we can just let it say, no, we're not gonna force that in, let's just. Do that. But fucking Fire Recovery is out of California, not known to anybody. Here, other than them reaching out to me saying, hey, why do you guys not do this anymore, do you wanna continue this and then?
So we're just gonna have to see by experience how much persistence it takes to collect.
Correct.
Well, they're used to doing it with us, but if they're used to doing it with other fire departments.
Right.
They may, I, I think it depends on whether your insurance company has a unit set up to handle it. And if they do, it might be pretty easy, if they don't. Uh, we might have to bang on a little bit to get them to pay.
There's been quite.
Since we hadn't done it in a while, we don't really know.
Right.
What that's gonna be.
Right, and like I said, we used to do it all the time, but.
Yeah, I know we did.
Every accident, everything out in the city.
And there's more, a lot more accidents we're working now, because there's so much road traffic.
So I mean, and that's just a way for the fire department to get some income to fix the building, to do whatever we need to do.
Is this the only outfit that does it in the United States that you know of?
Only one I know of, yes.
The only one that offered.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they, like I said, we were with this company before.
Okay.
And then.
So we submit the bill, I didn't want to interrupt you, but we submit the bill to them and then they try to collect it, is that how it works?
We don't even submit a bill, we submit the fire runs to the company, they do all the billing, they do everything.
Okay, yeah.
All we have to do is put the, they give us a login, we put all the information in the system, they do all the billing, they do everything.
And the collection.
And they do the collections, they do.
So we don't have to do that.
They'll just, we just, and they get paid by a percentage of what they collect for us. Is how they make their money, so I mean.
That's usually worth it though, because if we were on our own, you'd be doing this kind of stuff on Sundays and stuff.
Right.
Cause you just don't have time to do it, you know, we don't have to do.
Well, and they know what to do.
Yeah, exactly, and they're bigger, they're bigger outfit, and they'll get their attention a lot quicker than we would. Where do the numbers come from?
That is their standard numbers that they have. I know I have it.
Just California practice?
It could be, I don't know, that, that is their, their national rate that they. That they have, I mean, I wanna say they get like fifteen percent. Of everything that they collect, so a, a simple motor vehicle accident, six hundred and twenty dollars, we'll get eighty percent of that. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, six hundred and two. And then depending on what equipment has to be used, that goes up. Now, I mean, if you have, if we have to use the extraction tools, it's eighteen hundred dollars, move over eighteen hundred dollars. Uh, I mean, even creating the landing zone for a helicopter, which we had one just, this weekend, that's five hundred and fifty-three dollars. So, I mean, that's.
So that's all that added together, or just if it comes to that, that's the price?
No, if we, that would be all that added together, if we, so I could say, major accident, we had to extricate. At six hundred eighty-seven dollars, then we have to create a, a, I'm sorry, no, extrication is eighteen hundred dollars, then we have to create a landing zone. That's another five hundred and fifty-three, so it, it all just builds up as you go.
But so, but it's like level one, level two, level three, that price plus the eighteen oh one, plus the landing zone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's cumulative of every service that we provide.
I'm sorry.
I said it's cumulative, every service we provide, we can bill for.
Correct.
On the level two and level three, do you have a hazmat certified team or? No, we call one out.
We would have to call, we, we call them out from, actually we call dispatch, dispatch will.
Oh, okay.
Have hazmat come out. Yeah, as far as hazmat, when it could, we know there's hazmat there, we use the rule of thumb, if we get too close and we can't see through our thumb, we're.
Yeah.
We're not going. And then fires is, you know, five hundred and fifty-four dollars per hour per engine, and then trucks cost more. And it just goes up as you, as you go. Uh, so I mean. We would bill for water incidents, although we don't have anything to do water rescue, our water rescue would probably end up having to come out of Red Oak. That would be the closest.
I was wondering what's like, water incidents, I didn't, I. You're talking about a lake or something, or somebody or a car and they did.
These, these creeks run, real creek and.
Richland?
Richland Creek, they both, when it rains, they both run pretty good, and, you know, people do like to.
Yep.
Somebody almost ran out of the water tower one time, I recall.
Yeah.
Could have caused some water there.
But, and as far as it wouldn't. Th- this is for, the mitigation is for incidents that ha- happened within our fire area. So going to do mutual aid or something, no, that wouldn't, we couldn't charge for that, because that would be. If that other agency does it, then that's double dipping and you get in trouble for that.
We're not just limited to city limits, or are we?
No, no, we go to the county, and we, we can charge out in the county, and as long, and then our fire district actually goes out into the county. From the way it was explained to me, our fire area is equal to our school district. So if you know our school district boundaries, you know how far out.
So that's in Hill County.
Yes, and we. Yeah, we, we've talked with car, with Hill County, and they, they have a fire district, an emergency service district. That if they call out Atasca, Hillsborough, Bertens, whoever they call out that's in Hill County. Get some of that money from that fire district, they will not give us jack, but yet they still want us to.
And they may send one truck and one man, or that's what they used to do.
Yeah, that still happens. They, they rely on us a lot, but.
Well, is there any further discussion or questions? If not, would, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept three seven nine two four, adopting, no, no, that's wrong.
Three seven eight.
Three seven eight, yeah, here it is, three seven eight two four, for all of our emergency services through the fire department.
There's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of approving ordinance number three seven eight two, S two four, say aye.
Aye.
Imposed, okay, ordinance is enacted. And thank you Chief Phoenix for that presentation and for working this up. And uh, hopefully it will help us provide some revenue for services rendered. Uh, discussion possible action to pass resolution five oh seven dash two four. Allowing city to participate in local government cooperative purchasing program. Uh, Chief Amos presented this to us, and I'm not sure that. I know all the details, Kim, can you enlighten us on what this is?
Yes, so he has to have a resolution pass to buy through Buy Board, which is the purchasing program. Because the state is now requiring them to use that in order to purchase their blood drop kits for like D W I's. You can't just purchase them from them anymore, you have to go through Buy Board, and you can't do that unless you pass the resolution and start a contract with them. Uh, but it's just for purchasing of that equipment.
So this is necessary to, I guess, ensure that the evidence is uniform, I guess, throughout the state?
Yeah, they have, they had some, and, but they have run out and some have expired, and so he went to purchase one. Purchase some and they won't let him until he does this.
So this is the, is this the state?
They order it through.
The district attorney here is requiring this.
I'm not exactly sure who he orders them through.
It, it is, the state is requiring it, all, all of, now if.
Is that the D T S?
Yes, it's D P S lab, now if Milford wanted to hire an outside laboratory and pay to have it done. And pray to get the money back later when they go to court, you can do that and not have to go through this. But if you use the state D P S lab, you have to have their proper tubes, their proper packaging is. It has to go.
So it's really not costing us any extra by doing it?
No.
But if we don't do it, it costs us.
Yeah, or the case might be.
Right.
Might be challenged.
And then there won't be no restitution, and then you don't get your money back.
So I think, all around, it's a good, probably a good move on our part. Any further discussions?
I make a motion that we accept the resolution five oh seven two four, allowing the city to participate in the local. Government corporation programming, purchasing pro- program.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Imposed. Ordinance is adopted, uh, we have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
They're second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Imposed.